Madam Clerk, it your pleasure.
Commissioner Pontilipski. Commissioner Basleys. Commissioner Sedano.
Here.
Commissioner Sefeli. Commissioner Lopez.
Here.
Commissioner O'Day.
Here.
Commissioner Rodriguez. Commissioner Walker.
Here.
Chairman Romano.
Here.
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the public which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided as follows. Posting notice of Resolution 801 2025 on the County Commissioners Bulletin Board, first floor, Administration Building Annex, Jersey City, New Jersey. Copies of the above-mentioned resolution have been sent to the county clerk and the editors of the Carney Observer and the Star Ledger. May I have a motion to approve the minutes of the caucus meeting of October 7, 2025, the regular meeting of October 9, 2025, caucus meeting of October 21, 2025, and the regular meeting of October 23, 2025?
Motion.
Ray and Basleys.
Commissioner Pontilipski. Commissioner Basleys. Commissioner Sedano.
Yes.
Commissioner Sefeli. Commissioner Lopez.
Yeah.
Commissioner O'Day.
Yeah.
Jim.
Jim.
Commissioner Rodriguez.
Yes.
Commissioner Walker.
Yes.
Chairman Romano.
Yes.
The next order of business is to turn it over to administration.
Mr. Chairman, I have no additional items. However, there were some replacements that I want to go over.
Sure.
Resolution number 14 is being replaced because we had to change the dates. The new dates are October 1, 2025, to June 30, 2026.
Okay.
Number 25. Again, there was a change in the date. The new date is October 25, I'm sorry, October 1, 2025, to June 30, 2026. Resolution number 26 is to authorize payment, so we had to insert that. And the new term is July 1, 2025, to June 30, 2026. Number 27, again, is to authorize payment. And the new term is July 1, 2025, to June 30, 2026. And then 28. Resolution 28 is also authorizing payment. And the new term is July 1, 2025, to June 30, 2026. I have no additional items, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
We still did not get 27. It didn't come downstairs yet.
Okay, when it comes. We have 27 coming, is that correct, Mr. Administrator?
Should be.
And that's for the same basic thing, correct?
Yeah, like I said, number 27, it's, again, it's just authorizing payment. And the new term is July 1, 2025, to June 30, 2026.
Okay.
So that's the only change.
Good. Continue, Madam Clerk.
According to the policy set by the Board of County Commissioners, members of the public are asked to limit their comments to five minutes when discussing agenda items and three minutes at the conclusion of the meeting for persons who submitted a written request to discuss matters of public interest. At this time, the public may address the board on any item on the agenda only. Please keep your comments limited to five minutes. Are there any speakers on the agenda items only? Seeing none, may I have a motion to approve all the items listed on the consent agenda? And a second.
Motion.
Motion.
Sedano and Rodriguez.
Commissioner Pontilipski. Commissioner Basleys. Commissioner Sedano.
Yes.
Commissioner Sefeli. Commissioner Lopez.
Yeah.
Commissioner O'Day.
I'm saying on 19C.
19C.
And I on the rest.
Thank you. Commissioner Rodriguez?
Yes.
Commissioner Walker?
Yes.
Chairman Romano?
Yes.
We have to have a change here. Commissioner Lipski isn't here. So I need a second on 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6.
Commissioner Sedano will take it.
Commissioner Sefeli, please note, just entered.
Record.
Commissioner, do you want to vote on the?
Minutes?
On the minutes?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
And Commissioner Sedano is going to?
On the agenda items, too?
Yes.
Thank you. So Commissioner Sedano is going to fill in for all Commissioner Lipski's? Okay, thank you.
If they're voting on the agenda? Yes. Yes.
Ordinance.
We have three ordinances for introduction. The first one is roads and public property. It's an ordinance amending Chapter 200, Article 8, Point 11 of the Administrative Code to establish a restricted parking space on Willow Avenue, City of Hoboken, for James B. Rooney. Commissioner Pontilipski. Commissioner Basleys. Commissioner Sedano.
Yes.
Commissioner Sefeli.
Yes.
Commissioner Lopez. Commissioner O'Day.
Yeah.
Commissioner Rodriguez?
Yes.
Commissioner Walker?
David.
Yes.
Chairman Romano?
Yes.
The ordinance has been introduced. A2, Roads and Public Property, an ordinance amending Chapter 200, Article 27 of the Administrative Code to establish traffic calming devices delineators on County Avenue in the Town of Seacaukus. Commissioner Pontilipski. Commissioner Basleys. Commissioner Sedano.
Yes.
Commissioner Sefeli. Commissioner Lopez. Commissioner O'Day.
Yeah.
Commissioner Rodriguez?
Yes.
Commissioner Walker?
Yes.
Chairman Romano?
Yes.
The ordinance has been introduced. A2, An ordinance of the County of Hudson State of New Jersey approving and authorizing the entering into execution and delivery of a lease and development agreement with the Hudson County Improvement Authority for the Liberty Science Center High School Project with an estimated cost not to exceed $76 million. The cost of such project is to be financed through the issuance of county secured lease revenue bonds of the Hudson County Improvement Authority. The entering into executive and delivery of a lease agreement with the Hudson County Schools of Technology to provide science, technology, engineering, and mathematics educational services for the students of the county. The guarantee of the payment of the principal of and the interests are not exceeding $76 million aggregate principal amount of county secured lease revenue bond Series 2025, the Liberty Science High School Project issued by the Hudson County Improvement Authority for the purpose of providing additional security therefor, consenting to such financing and determining certain other matters in connection therewith. Commissioner Pontilipski. Miss?
Sure, go ahead, Bill.
Abe, did you see the last question I emailed you?
Yes, I did. And I followed up with Mike O'Connor. I don't know the answer to that. I don't know if he's available.
Yes, he's on.
Yeah.
What's the question, Bill?
Well, the question is, we see a memo sent to the executive director of the JCRAS saying, "We need you to, we need $10 million from your escrow for the project to work." But I don't see the answer. And then beyond the answer, my question was, what do they have to formally do? So there's an escrow agreement that says the two parties, either the court can order it, or the two parties can mutually agree to allocate money from the escrow account.
Mike O'Connor, please answer the question.
Hold on, hold on. One of the two parties is the Jersey City Redevelopment Authority. I believe that the Jersey City Redevelopment Authority, because it would be the case if it related to where I am, would need authorization from their board to be able to do that. So is that the case? And then when will that authorization take place? And how does that fit into the timing of everything else that's getting done? Because at the end of the day, in order for you to enter into an agreement for someone to do a design build of the building, you got to show you got all the money. And how are we going to show it? How and when will that $10 million be shown?
Mike?
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, sorry. And I did send, it was late when I sent it, Commissioner. It was probably five minutes before your meeting. So I did send an email. And you're right, it's, the JCRAS and SciTech need to agree, come to agreement, which they have, related to the release of funds from that escrow, related to the terms of that escrow. And if an action of the JCRAS necessary, they'll take that action of the board. And we're working through those issues right now. So you can see that in the email that I sent. So also, the Improvement Authority will enter into an agreement or an amended agreement with SciTech, with their commitment of the $10 million in funds also. So when the JCRAS releases the funds from that escrow, and I think there's $19 million in it, Commissioner, yeah, I believe that's the case.
Yep, thanks.
Yeah, so when that money's released from the escrow by the JCRAS, then $10 million of that will simultaneously be wired to the Improvement Authority. So that's how this is structured. As to whether they have to take a formal action of their board or not, we're working through that. I can't confirm it with you. We'll know in the next day or two. They may have to, I can't speak to that. They may not. If they have to, they've committed to do this, you know, the parties. So that's that. And then in terms of the timeline of how the authority awards that design build contract, the authority, once the Board of Commissioners adopts the amended resolution, excuse me, amended bond ordinance, I guess that's later in the month, then the authority will be able to proceed with the award of the contract for the design build. Because the funds will be available, you're committed for that. So that's how that'll work. We have 60 days from the time we received the proposals from the respondents, which was October 17. So we're like mid-December. We could conceivably extend that, but we don't want to do that. We want to move forward and wrap everything up.
So all I would say is that if, as I suspect, there needs to be a resolution of the JCRAS authorizing the disposal of the $10 million of an escrow account, that needs to happen between now and the next meeting.
Your next board meeting on?
Mike, Mike.
I'm sorry.
Excuse me, Commissioner, the public hearing on this ordinance is scheduled for December 11.
Oh, so there you go. I apologize. I missed.
It's not the Thanksgiving.
So between now and December 11?
Correct.
You would agree that whatever actions that are needed in order to finalize the $10 million escrow movement would have to take place.
And that date also works because it's before the 60 days, and I believe the Improvement Authority meets on the 10th. And that's when the local finance board will have their.
That's correct. And I'm sorry, I'm not in front, I'm not at my desk when we're talking about this. But yes, that's correct. And I apologize about getting the dates. But Commissioner, we agree with you.
Mike, just keep us posted on it, okay? Mike, just keep us.
100%, 100%.
Thank you. Okay.
You're welcome.
Madam Clerk.
We have two ordinances for public hearing. Ordinance A2, it's an ordinance amending the Hudson County District.
You have enough to vote.
Take the vote.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Commissioner Pontilipski. Commissioner Basleys. Commissioner Sedano.
Yes.
Commissioner Sefeli. Commissioner Sefeli?
Yes.
Oh, I couldn't hear. Commissioner Lopez. Commissioner O'Day.
Yeah.
Commissioner Rodriguez. Commissioner Walker?
Yes.
Sorry, yes.
Yes, thank you. Chairman Romano?
Yes.
The ordinance has been introduced. We have two ordinances for public hearing. The ordinance amending the Hudson County District Solid Waste Management Plan to include the Advanced Enterprises Recycling Inc. facilities as the county designated facilities to which solid waste types 10, 13, 13C, 23, 25, and 27 are directed for disposal. Two, incorporate the new solid waste disposal services agreement by and between the Hudson County Improvement Authority and AER for the provision of disposable service for solid waste types 10, 13, 13C, 23, 25, and 27. And three, direct all solid waste types 10, 13, 13C, 23, 25, and 27 to the AER facilities for disposal pursuant to regulatory waste flow control. This is the time fixed for the public hearing of this ordinance, which was introduced at the meeting of October 23, 2025, advertised as required by law, together with a notice of hearing for this time. It's been posted on the County Commissioners Bulletin Board and made available to the general public. Are there any speakers on this ordinance? Seeing none, I'll ask for a motion to close the hearing.
Motion.
Sedano and Lopez.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
On the final adoption. Commissioner Pontilipski. Commissioner Basleys. Commissioner Sedano.
Yes.
Commissioner Sefeli. Commissioner Lopez. Commissioner O'Day.
Yeah.
Commissioner Rodriguez?
Yes.
Commissioner Walker?
Yes.
Chairman Romano?
Yes.
The ordinance has been adopted. A3, Roads and Public Property Engineering, ordinance amending Chapter 200, Article 27 of the Administrative Code to establish traffic calming devices on Bergen Turnpike in the city of Union City and John F. Kennedy Boulevard East in the town of Gottenburg. This is the time fixed for the public hearing of this ordinance, which was introduced at the meeting of October 23, 2025, advertised as required by law, together with a notice of hearing for this time. It's been posted on the County Commissioners Bulletin Board and made available to the general public. Are there any speakers on this ordinance? Seeing none, I'll ask for a motion to close the hearing.
Close.
Second.
Sefeli and Sedano.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All in favor on the final adoption. Commissioner Pontilipski. Commissioner Basleys. Commissioner Sedano.
Yes.
Commissioner Sefeli.
Yes.
Commissioner Lopez. Commissioner O'Day.
Yeah.
Commissioner Rodriguez?
Yes.
Commissioner Walker?
Yes.
Chairman Romano?
Yes.
The ordinance has been adopted. This concludes the item of business for today's agenda. Are there any comments from the commissioners on the business of the board?
Yes, two things. Congratulations to the prosecutor's office. They caught a wanted murderer. So good job. And number two, Commissioner Sefeli asked about Durango yesterday. Al Barico spoke with him, the Sheriff Conti. Please bring Al up to speed on what.
It was basically an accident that one of our officers got into with property damage. So right now, we're just waiting for more documentation, if there's anything that we can even do on it.
Well, as far as we know, there's no personal injuries.
No, thankfully. Thank God.
Fine.
Great.
Thank you.
Continue, Madam Clerk. You're welcome.
Are there any comments from the chief of staff of the county executive? Okay. This is the time for persons who submitted a timely written request to address the board on any matter of public interest. Please remember to limit your comments to three minutes. We do have speakers, Mr. Chairman. First one is Raymond Mitchell.
How's everybody doing today? Hope you're all doing well. I just want to let you know, during the early voting, I became a candidate as a write-in for the governorship statewide, everybody. I would like to pass this around to everybody to see how nice and. Well, now, is Michael Harper here?
No.
Is Mickey Sherald here? I called both of them to be here today.
No.
Okay. Yeah, Mickey Sherald, yeah.
Mikey.
Oh, no. All right, so we have either, okay, good. All right, so the reason is, I've been trying to get ahold of Michael Harper and trying to find out what's going on with the audits, investigation inspections on ballots to find out how many votes I have, you know, in Hudson County. He'd been ducking me. He was in Seacaukus Housing. I stopped over there, okay? I asked for him. Ron went in and told him I was outside. I said, "I'm going to go run upstairs real fast, and I'll come back down and bring my stuff." Five minutes. I was only five minutes, and he leaves. So I don't know what's wrong with him. Michael Harper was a very nice guy before. He helped me out with some housing issues. And now, all of a sudden, he's ducking me on this issue, finding out what's going on. I called up the warehouse. You got over maybe 500 machines. They're saying that it's, the technicians that came out, they came out a lot of times. I'm not sure how that is a lot of times. I'm not sure if that's a fair, secure, and safe election. Plus, there was all these bombs alerts. And Harrison, who's from Harrison? I never got anything from them. I called to find out about reports.
Saying that you got write-ins.
Write-ins, yeah. So, and it was early voting, and Bergen County already screwed over in East Rutherford, Burnie County.
Speak for a second?
Oh, no. So Bergen County also.
Can you just let him finish and then speak?
Yeah. Bergen County, I was a write-in. I call up, I look for the state, and I was never on to find out what happened to my vote. That was early voting. My brother also did early voting for me as well. And I call up, and she said, "Oh, the personal choice. We wait till the end." And they were like, "Why is that? Tuesday was the election. I should have been in the news." At least 1, 2, 3, whatever many votes I had, that's fair. I think my name should have been up there. And it was not for some reason. So something happened in Bergen County as well. They will be under investigation as well. I got these forms here to fill out about election, investigation request. I also had to put a complaint with the Seacaukus Police, Michael Harper, for just leaving. I had to just document that, just so I know. So I'm just trying to find out who's in charge of Michael Harper here.
Three minutes, Mr. Mitchell.
Anybody?
Mr. Mitchell, after Commissioner Sefeli wanted this question.
So, Mr. Mitchell, your belief is that somewhere in the state of New Jersey, Hudson, Bergen?
Well, if you think about, I'm sorry, go ahead. Okay, go ahead, go ahead.
He needs to use the mic.
Yeah, I can't really hear him, sorry.
So your belief is that you received a personal choice write-in?
Yes.
Ballots in Hudson, Bergen?
It could be anywhere in the state, sir. We're in 21 counties.
Let him finish, please.
Okay, sorry.
And is it your position that but for your getting responses, you think there was irregularities that would have made a difference in the election?
Could be. We don't know how much fraud is out there. And also, Mickey Sherald already, she went to the state, Trenton, and Governor Murphy already passed over the torch. And he's not even certified.
That's a good question.
So.
Do you have?
That's illegal. That should be.
Mr. Mitchell, just one word. That's it. Your speaking is up.
You have a problem in Union City. We all know that. That's well documented. But my question to you is, you're questioning the integrity of the Hudson County Board of Elections with respect to the count.
Yeah.
Do you think, do you have a reasonable belief that but for irregularities in the tally or the tabulation, that you would be the winner?
Hey, you never know.
Okay.
You know, we know Mickey Sherald's the winner.
Thank you.
After the, after you could talk to Commissioner Sefeli. After the thing. Okay. So get her on the votes, please.
For the caucus meeting on October 7, and the regular meeting on October 9, the caucus meeting on the 21st of October, and the regular meeting of the 10th, October 23. Thank you. Next speaker is Courtney Walker.
Well, Courtney's coming up. I just want also, we had Veterans Day last week, and Joanne Northgrave, Northgrave did a great job, along with Director Lisa Push and the staff, both that the veterans are met for the county, recognizing so many distinguished veterans from previous wars and conflicts. And also, she did an amazing job representing at the Harasmas Cemetery in the cold. So thank you, Joanne.
Can we just, can we just ask Michael Harper to provide us a list of all write-ins for governor that were made in Hudson County?
We'll get you those.
Just ask him to provide us.
Would you take care of that, please?
All the write-ins that were done in Hudson County.
Yeah, sure. All right there, Abe?
For the elections, yes.
Okay. Okay.
Tell us for all the, for the whole, for the whole county.
Courtney, the floor is yours.
All right, thank you. Hello, commissioners. My name is Courtney Walker, and I'm a resident of Jersey City. I have two items to address today. First, I want to thank you for passing the resolution in support of the Immigrant Trust Act in September. As the legislature enters a busy lame duck session, I urge each of you to continue advocating for this bill so it can be passed and signed into law. Second, I want to raise concerns about our election process here in Hudson County. Now my concerns differ from Mr. Mitchell's. I don't have concerns about the overall Michael Harper. I've talked to him before. He's very nice. But I am concerned that year after year, our county ranks last in voter turnout statewide, and this year appears to be no different. While many factors influence turnout, communication from our local government, or the lack of it, plays a major role. Research shows that clear proactive communication from local agencies boosts turnout, so let's assume the absence of it does the opposite. Consistently placing last isn't bad luck. It's a systematic issue. The recent November election highlighted several preventable missteps. Sample ballots weren't delivered before early voting began. Voters received no proactive communication about the new early voting centers which were established, and many voters said they never received their mail-in ballots when I was doing phone banking. I've previously raised concerns about the distribution of early voting centers here. While new sites were eventually added, the process felt rushed with decisions made at the last minute. This raises serious questions about our planning and commitment to equitable voter access. As we look ahead to next year, I'm asking for a firm commitment from the county to improve our election processes. We can't be satisfied with such low participation. We need real measurable improvements every election cycle. It's time to stop repeating the same processes that yields the same poor results. We need systematic change. Some specific areas for improvement could be setting a clear coverage standard of early voting sites. For example, ensuring every voter lives within a set distance, like a quarter mile of a site. Increasing public outreach around new voting locations, including mailings, ads, and community events, and fixing recurring mailing errors from the county clerk's office that continue to frustrate and disenfranchise voters. For the past year, I've raised concerns around our low turnout, but haven't seen meaningful effort to address them. To be clear, we should never accept being last in the state. We must do better and strengthen our democracy here in Hudson County every single day. Thank you.
Thank you, Courtney.
Chairman, please. You pointed out one possible problem, which was.
Please use the microphones.
So you highlighted one possible cause for the low voter turnout from Hudson, and that was that the sample ballots go out later than the initial vote in or mail by drop-off.
I believe that the ballots missed the deadline of when they were supposed to be sent to voters.
And that would be, that would be a problem.
Yes.
But is there also a problem with the coordination of the dates? For example, if the proper date for the ballot notices to go out to the registered voters is 30 days or 20 days before the election, I'm sorry, I beg your indulgence. I don't know what the cutoff date is.
Yeah, that's a great question, and I know that.
My other question is, it sounds like maybe there's no coordination between that date and the date that your early voting starts.
There could be. I think there's two issues here. The first, the early voting period was extended by state law, so maybe that date wasn't updated. so maybe that date wasn't updated, uh, with that state law. I believe Brian Stacks sponsored that law, so that would be something to make sure that that's, you know, aligned with. And second, our clerk did miss the deadline.
We'll get, we'll get answered to those questions.
Just let me, if I finish. So, would you think it would be a salutary step on our part as the county to prevent the lowest turnout? If we had a proper coordination between the mailing of the sample ballots and the initiation, uh, date for, uh, uh, ballots by mail or drop-off? You think that they should be, my common sense is that they should be coordinated to one date?
Yeah, that's one small step. That's one small step, yes.
So we'll, we'll talk to the board then. Thank, thank you.
Thank you, Courtney.
Next, next speaker is Chris Murphy.
Chris? Chris, no Chris.
No Chris. Next one is Jonas Damikovic.
Hello, everyone.
Hello, Joe.
Uh, thank you for letting me speak. Um, I'm here to talk about, uh, getting a bus rapid transit, uh, done on JFK Boulevard. Uh, we got a big problem with, uh, traffic in Jersey City. Um, by the way, I'm Jonas. Um, I live on the west side of Jersey City, uh, and I'm an officer in Riverview Neighborhood Association, which is up in Jersey City Heights. Uh, so I know Jersey City. I know Bayonne. I know Hudson County. And, uh, the traffic's gotten really, really bad the past, uh, past year or so. And, uh, the, uh, 119 bus, uh, which is the backbone of Bayonne, Jersey City, Hoboken, and then into the city, uh, it has deteriorated over about the past year. It's just gotten noticeably worse. Um, and so we've been getting a lot of complaints at Riverview Neighborhood Association, uh, about the 119. Um, and so, uh, we met five different times with, uh, NJ Transit. And, um, we, the biggest, uh, issue that's kept coming back is, uh, the traffic on JFK Boulevard, starting at Bayonne, getting up to Journal Square. Um, and a good example is, uh, just the other day, I was waiting for the 119 in the morning, uh, at, uh, Communipaw and JFK, uh, going, uh, uh, up north. And, um, no bus came, no bus came. I waited 10, I think 12 minutes. All of a sudden, three 119 buses come. One of them is packed, two of them are empty. Ah, what a waste of resources, right? NJ Transit explained the reason this happens is because of traffic. The bus gets stuck in the traffic and other buses pile up behind it. And they say that the most important thing we could do is a bus rapid transit, uh, system on JFK Boulevard. And this would include, uh, three major things. Uh, one would be signal priority, uh, so they get green lights, the buses, uh, when they're approaching the traffic lights. Uh, second would be, um, they'd fix some curbs to make it easier to board, especially for folks who are disabled to have some mobility issues. And then the third and the most important is a bus lane. Um, and we worked out how that would be. Would that be just during rush hour? Would it be all the time? Uh, big thing is, though, the bus lane would, uh, would help tremendously to get those buses moving. Um, now, I have family in, uh, Queens, uh, along, um, Hillside Avenue, and they just, uh, built a bus lane there, and it is night and day. I was surprised. I moved so fast. So guys, we're Hudson County. We're losing to Queens here. Come on. Uh, so I heard that, uh, Hudson County had some plans to study bus rapid transit on JFK bus lane. I'm just wondering what the, uh, what the state of that is, and I'm here to advocate for that. Please, please, please. It's getting really, really difficult to live here. It's, it's hurting our lives. You've gotta help us. Please help us. Thanks.
Thank you, Jonas. I think after the meeting, you could talk to the Director Rhodes, let you know with the engineers where that's at.
Okay, cool. Thank you.
Kalila Daly.
Good evening, Commissioners. Um, as you know, my name is Kalila Daly. I work for Hudson County Department of Family Services, and I'm a volunteer with Leaders Without Limits nonprofit organization. Um, Leader, Leaders Without Limits provides food and supplies for other, for five other pantries, churches, massages, senior homes, veteran homes. We do it all. We're basically trying to help the community during this time. What we've noticed is that the need has far outpaced our resources. Our community partners are overwhelmed, and the sad truth is that we simply can't keep up with the growing demand. In the Greenville section, our churches, massages, and food pantries are facing unprecedented crisis. In the recent months, we've received dramatic increase in families, seniors, and even working residents, including the government shutdown, employees infected by the government shutdown. All coming to us for help. Many have also lost their food stamp benefits due to theft and no longer being able to be compensated behind this. Combined with high rents and rising costs, it's left too many of our neighbors without enough to eat. And that's why I'm here tonight, because I'm looking at it. I'm looking at it at work. I'm looking at food stamp representatives tell people to go to pantries. I'm looking at the pantries that we deal with basically become overwhelmed because we're not, we don't, we don't know what to do, really. So we're working to try to figure out what can be done, and that's why I'm here tonight. Our pantry has grown from serving 300 families to now close to 1,000. We're doing everything we can, but funding cutbacks have made it nearly impossible to meet the need. We're running out of the most basic supplies, like non-perishable foods, baby formulas, diapers, hygiene products, cleaning supplies, warm clothing, and blankets. And as winter approaches, we're especially worried about the infants, toddlers, children who will be stinging on food lines without hats, gloves, socks, or coats. As a casework, I see the pain behind these numbers. Elderly people who've worked their whole lives now standing on food lines. And fam- families are terrified that they won't be able to feed their children. Food insecurity is spreading, and the impact is devastating. With the holidays and cold weather approaching, this need will only grow. We, we're, we're looking at it now. The numbers are just growing. So tonight, I'm asking for support and partnership to help us meet this urgent need. These are not luxuries. They're essentials that keep people healthy, safe, and dignified. So what I'm coming to you tonight is to tell you that the things that we basically need from bags to, you know, to give the people the food, to things that we normally would have in excess, has become depleted almost. So tonight, I want to know what can be done, what can be, you know, who can help, who you can direct us to help us, anything.
Frank Mazza would be the one for you to speak to. Or Doris. Frank or Doris.
That would be Doris.
Three minutes, Miss Daly.
Okay. Thank you.
Do you get, do you, do you currently get any funding?
No, we get like donations from people in the community, but nothing major. But what happened was, when we started getting the masses, when the people started coming in droves, what we usually gave out to help the families, we no longer have it to do.
Are you, are you part of the food, uh, the food, the Community Food Bank of New Jersey?
Yes, we are. But they cut back.
Okay.
They cut back, and the numbers grew. So that's why we're in the predicament now, due to the cutback. And then the increase from, from when the food stamps were, were being stolen from the clients.
Yep.
So on top of that, the government shutdown came, and the benefits were suspended. Yes.
Perfect, the perfect storm, so to speak.
See, see Doris.
Yeah, but you need to, but Doris, you need to report back, like, keep us posted on it. Obviously, this has been an issue of discussion at several meetings. Um, the, the reality is, the numbers are growing, and they're probably going to continue to grow. We, we're, we're held at the mercy of Washington and what they're doing down there. Uh, we had a lot of discussion at the last meeting about what was gonna happen with SNAP and the effect and, and the effect and impact of what was happening with the, with the closing of the government. Um, I know that Doris has been working with the county executive administration on a, on a plan to increase , uh, product, so there'd be more whether food products or other product available, because it's the only way to address it, is, is, is to do that. Um, reality is, it's coming at a time when next year, federal money we received from, during COVID, to do this is going away. So we, 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 at least unlike other government jurisdictions, are ahead of the curve in identifying what that is. Now it's, now it's a matter of putting in place a plan to first replace what we're losing, right? Because those dollars are going away. And those dollars are, at, at, at a minimum in the hundreds of thousands, if not in excess of a million dollars a year. And then secondly, you know, how do, how do we better plan? How do we better serve? How do we reach different targeted populations? So one thing that I had started, um, a discussion with, with Doris, um, relates to individuals that are, that are diabetic. So diabetic individuals go to dialysis.
We help them too.
They go to dialysis, and we're working, we started a conversation with one of the dialysis centers of them putting a small pantry in their location. The benefit of that is they, their patients are prescribed certain diets. If they can't afford, because they, they're on a fixed income, if they can't afford the items on their diet, then that works against them, and it works against them staying healthy.
Yes.
So the more we think, the more creative we get, the more focused we get on that issue, I think, the better. But I agree with you. The problem's not going away. The problem's only gonna get greater. Anywhere we, we, we through the nonprofit that I'm involved with distributes to 2,100 individuals twice a month. I don't know whether after the COVID money runs out next year, whether they're gonna have the food product for those 2,100 people. If they don't, I'm gonna have to figure out a way to do it, right? Because you just can't, you know, because they're not people that are, they're not people taking that food and selling it anywhere, trust me. Those people that throw that myth out there, they need, they need to, to, to look a little bit. But to the county's credit, they, they are, you know, helpful and step up. There was, well, I guess maybe two weeks ago, the Biden Organization had an opportunity to pick up Prada from a location, and they had to pick it up the next morning. And at 6 o'clock the night before, they reached out to me, and I was able to reach out to Denise, and she got them the trucks to pick them up the night before and get them delivered. And then on that Saturday, when they distributed all, all of the food, the, the machinery that condenses all the boxes
Yes.
was broken. And, and, and between roads and parks, they were able to send a crew to take care of that, because it was in the parking lot of a church, and you couldn't leave in a church parking lot, all of those boxes when services were gonna be on Sunday. So I think that, you know, I think that the county is in a better place than most when it comes to the issue. But obviously, we have to, we have to improve on that, and we have to plan on it. And I, and I have faith in Doris, and I have faith in, in Frank, and obviously in the county exec, um, in, in moving in that direction. But I, I'm with you.
Thank you.
I'm with you. I mean, we did a resolution as it related to food stamps, asking the government to simply make a change, is that, so people, it wasn't so easy to steal. And I doubt that that's been done yet. Frank, has anything happened with that?
No.
So, you know, it's just gonna get worse, right? And that, and now, knowing what Washington is, they're gonna say, "If yours gets stolen, then you're out forever." We're just taking you out.
Are they ever talking about bringing back in the money when people lose their, their food stamps?
I'd have to refer to Frank.
Refer to Frank later and, and to Doris. Doris, okay?
Frank Mazza and Doris.
Over there. Thank you.
And then stay in touch.
Okay, the next speaker is Beverly Murphy.
Can I ask a question of the speaker? And, and, and maybe, um, um, Doris is here. Um, how many families in Hudson are SNAP recipients?
I don't have that number tonight. He does.
Okay.
Well, that's why, you know.
So there's 53,000, uh, food stamp cases. There are 93,000.
Cases, so that's a family unit?
Families is about 3,000. Uh, the rest are individuals without dependents. But overall, it's 93,000 individuals get food stamp.
Okay. And, and what percentage of that is the constituency of Hudson County, the tax, the, the census? 15%?
Probably, yeah.
Right. So, so even, even before the shutdown, even before the, um, shenanigans that Washington's been playing with, with SNAP, I'm getting the impression that even, even at 100% on this system, the SNAP benefits aren't enough to pay nutrition for the average family.
Yes. And I would like to voice that a lot of people have health conditions, some.
I had another question. The other question is, from, from the county, i- is there any of funds that we as a county have available, because money's tight all over, to supplement those SNAP benefits for some emergency purposes? Do we have a reserve to, to?
No.
No. Okay. Um, alright, so that, that answers, that answers that question. The second question I had, and maybe Doris can answer this, is if, if we, as a county, could find that money, and we wanted to channel that money into food banks, community food banks, is there a way that we have to, to vet the food banks to say that?
No, we have a list, correct?
I mean, but are, are they vetted and everybody?
Yeah.
So, so food bank in, in Harrison or Carney or Jersey City or North Bergen is already recognized as a legitimate repository for, for whatever benefits we can, we can give. Okay.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Beverly Murphy.
See Doris, though. She'll give you any guidance.
Beverly Murphy?
Ms. Murphy?
The next one is Eve Taylor.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Eve Taylor, and I'm a former finance director, now legally disabled. I'm here to speak about homelessness, food insecurity, and government failure in Hudson County. Yesterday, I filed federal civil rights case 225 CV17393 MCA MAH against the city of Jersey City, Stephen Philip, and former Hudson County prosecutor Esther Suarez, and others for six years of systematic non-enforcement of rent control, housing, and consumer protection laws. Under Civil Rights Law 42 USC 1985, the Fair Housing Act, 42 USC 3601, and NJSA 2A4210, uh, point 10, these agencies had a duty to protect disabled and resident tenants and from retaliation, unsafe housing, and fraud. Instead, they enable it. Because of that failure, I'm now, I've now lived with a permanent disability from carbon monoxide, have no income for 16 months while waiting for social security disability, which my claim decision was frozen during the federal shutdown, and my SNAP food assistance was blocked for a week. My rental assistance case, I have Hudson County rental assistance, but the landlord is attacking it. Um, again, uh, attorney Roberta Tarkin and landlord Mohammed Shahid, um, in their crimes, uh, former prosecutor Esther Suarez, Jacob Huddna, and Rami Eid have ignored for six years. Hudson County law enforcement's refusal to enforce basic housing law is creating, is, is what is creating the escalation of homelessness and starvation. Hudson County Prosecutor's Office and Fulham Administration have turned housing and code enforcement into a political favor system. Tenants who report hazards lose their homes. The food pantries are open only once a week, often at the same hour, requiring residents to arrive sometimes at 6:00 AM and wait outdoors, and those who are disabled or homeless cannot necessarily get there or do that. Um, cash general assistance is less than $200 a month, and the welfare office, if you have rental assistance, they confiscate 30% of your cash assistance, uh, calling it, uh, income, and they take it towards rent. So that doesn't leave enough money for basics such as hygiene supplies, phone, uh, clothing, or laundry. The growing humanitarian disaster is due to structural negligence and public corruption. The city and county must prosecute housing crimes such as rent price gouging, tenant harassment, and fire code-related vandalism. They continue to fail to do so. The human cost of Stephen Philip, Jacob Huddna, and Esther Suarez's policy failures are visible on every Jersey City block tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Eve.
Next speaker is Emmanuel Morgan.
Hi, Commissioners. It's good to see all of you. Um, I'm not sure if you heard, but with my colleague, we're just celebrating a pretty big path win. They just announced, um, significant service increases, no more stopping in Hoboken on the 33rd Street line, and a lot of other wins. Um, have a look at their press release when you have the chance. Um, but I'm actually here to talk about buses in support of my colleague at, uh, RNA Riverview Neighborhood Association. Um, about, um, 12 of us advocates met with NJ Transit two weeks ago, um, or, or October 23rd, I think it was, right before the commissioner meeting. And, um, we just, uh, are, are really here to support them and you and the county executive in implementing bus rapid transit on, on JFK. Um, so, um, here on behalf of Hudson County Complete Streets as co-founder, um, and I just, I want to thank the county executive for his public statement, um, his public commitment to be, to a BRT study, um, over the summer in July. Um, and I just wanted to make sure we, we have heard from some of our leadership that they're not really sure what BRT means. So as defined by the Federal Transit Administration, uh, BRT is a high-quality bus transit system that delivers fast and efficient buses, and it may include dedicated bus lanes, traffic signal priority, elevated platforms, payment before boarding, and enhanced stations. And the FTA likes to compare BRT to LRT, or Light Rail, which is the other. And the F T A likes to compare B R T to L R T or Light Rail, which is the other, you know, big, major transit system here in Hudson County. Light Rail carries sixty thousand passengers per day. Um, hundreds of cities all over the world, from New York to Marrakesh to Manila, have implemented B R T to get millions of people where they need to go with great efficiency. And speaking of millions of people, bus uh here in Hudson County, we have five million rides per year between the one one nine, the eighty eight, and the ten alone. When NJ Transit rescued the eighty eight and the ten last year, they made buses significantly more reliable and on time. When NJ Transit increased service on the one one nine in two in twenty twenty three, ridership increased fifty percent and then fifty percent again. So ridership on the one one nine has tripled in eight years. Millions of unseen and unheard people ride buses in Hudson County every day. But what's remarkable is how little we have valued them historically. It's not unusual to see fifty people on a bus stuck behind twelve people in cars and twelve cars, or seventy people on an articulated bus stuck at the red light. What B R T can do is to give bus riders the priority that they deserve. I urge you to begin talking with about B R T with your constituents and local leaders. Reach out to learn more. Watch the film made by N J C U professor um right here in Hudson County called The Number One Bus Chronicles. And most of all, at some point, ride the bus. Thank you, Commissioners, and to the county executive for your commitment to Vision Zero and uh which is so sorely needed to address the issue of safety and inequity and inequity on our streets. Thank you so much.
Next speaker.
Oh, I'm sorry. You said thirty three is not going to Hoboken anymore?
So the PATH, the Port Authority, just announced that PATH service is going to be significantly increased, um especially on weekends, which is something that we've been asking. Commissioner O'Day has been to the board meetings, Commissioner Aponte Lipsky, a lot of you have advocated for better PATH service, and they just today at their board meeting and made an announcement about significantly improved service, thanks to all of all of you and so many advocates who have gone to those board meetings. So we're going to get great, much better service.
Thank you.
Um, they are going to raise fares, though, but read the press release.
Yeah, so that guy Zach McCure has been trying to reach me for two days. I didn't realize he actually had good news for a change.
Oh, yes, and there will be a public Q and A with PATH on November twentieth at Hudson County Community College at between six P M. and eight P M. All are welcome. And um I think we announced it on Instagram earlier this week, and the PATH will also be making, Port Authority will be making an announcement.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Our next speaker is Eric Kona.
So where are we with putting out for the proposals to do the B R T study? I know we discussed it a couple of public resource committees ago.
Hi, Commissioner DeSalle Sandro. We are in the in the stages of going out for an R F Q. So we're putting specs together, and we should be going out by the beginning of twenty twenty six.
Okay. I think you should just keep us oh updated, and then obviously we keep the advocates updated by you keeping us updated. But we had discussed it, I think, two public resources committees ago, with the timeline.
Our next speaker is Eric Kona.
Eric? No, Eric.
Paul Koo.
Paul Koo?
No, Paul.
No, Paul.
Jack McKee.
Jack McKee.
Good evening, Commissioners. Can you hear me?
Yes.
There we go. Uh, I am also, my name is Jack McKee. I'm here as a Jersey City resident, Hudson County resident, member of Hudson County Complete Streets, to advocate for JFK B R T. Um, pick your reason. It will improve that. Uh, if you're talking about safety, it is absolutely a plan that will improve the safety for all parties, for cyclists, for pedestrians, for drivers, for bus drivers. I think the um the unsung hero in the bus lanes, bike lanes, uh safe streets situation is the drivers themselves, because I know as a driver, when I'm going down a road with no delineation, no concrete barriers, I am constantly living in the fear that that someone will come into my lane. Um, and so that is one reason why I support JFK B R T. Second, I believe that it opens up different areas of this county to positive transit-oriented development. This is something that, you know, I've yet to meet someone who doesn't support the idea of building homes and then creating transportation infrastructure to allow those people to get to and from work, to the things they love to do. Uh, but I encourage you to push forward with it. Um, environmentally, it helps us, you know, reach our environmental goals, so. I could keep going, you know, if you could pick a topic, I could find a way to make B R T a way to to achieve that, and I wouldn't be lying. Uh, good transit, good planning is one of those things that really does help us achieve. It helps you achieve your goals, and I don't need to know what your goals are up top. Um, this is, again, so this is one of those topics that everyone is for, you know. But whatever needs to be done to push it along, I encourage that. Uh, I look at the Secaucus Loop, you know, that extension to the New Jersey Transit, so uh so trains can come from New York City and go to the Meadowland Stadium. Um, that was an example of when there is a will, there is a way, and magically, something that would have taken years was just done, you know, decisions were made immediately because there was a need. The World Cup is coming here, and uh politicians in New Jersey didn't want to be embarrassed when a a train had to transfer to Secaucus. I would say that is the most accurate reason. Uh, but it was a great example to me, great evidence that when there is a desire to do something like the Secaucus Loop or JFK B R T, it can be done. It is our desire to do so. Um, and fortunately, it's not one of those topics that you have to convince. You don't have to convince convince anyone, really. It's just a willingness to work together with our counterparts at, you know, county, county executive, whatever legislator is, the New Jersey Transit uh community groups. It is almost entirely the willingness to meet with people and then and then doing it. So I won't ramble on. I think JFK JFK B R T is a great idea uh for everyone, for every reason. And when I look at places in the world that are, you know, good, well-planned, they develop, they allow residents, they're allowed tourists. They allow my my seventy four and seventy two year old mother and father to come up from Long Branch to visit me. They have a way to get around rather than that perpetual, so where do I park? Uh, because I always tell them to go to Park and Ride anyway. Uh, thank you very much, guys. Enjoy your evening.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, there are no further speakers. There being no further business.
Question, why is that that system ever going to get repaired? That's on the uh.
No, the time, no, they're waiting for a part, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Meeting is adjourned.
I hope that someday it gets repaired, though.